Was that, they're trying to get everything in order? Still gas.
You want to say picture walls?
Yeah. Stop right there.
They did it like that?
Yeah.
And you're professional with things?
Mm-hmm. I'm not a professional man. It should be better. Good thing out. Good thing out. All right, good thing out.
Is all working out?
No, just video. I mean, just audio. Call the meeting to order. So for viewers at home, we're having audio, uh, video difficulties. You'll only be able to hear us tonight. You'll be able to see the presentations on the screen, but the cameras in the chambers are unfortunately not connecting for some reason, so you will probably not see our faces tonight. So we apologize for the difficulties. It was supposed to be a good start to the new year, but whatever, we'll get through this too. We will start the meeting. We'll do a roll call. Uh, I'm sorry, we'll do pledge allegiance and then roll call. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Roll call.
Mr. Houghey.
Here.
Mayor Leahy.
Here.
Ms. Martin. Ms. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Dakota.
Here.
Mr. Dillon.
Here.
Ms. Darity.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Um, special order of business, communication, remote participation. This meeting is being held remotely in accordance with the governor of Massachusetts' March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, 38, section 20. Meetings would be held, uh, using remote participation, uh, and in public. Need a roll call on that? Okay. Um, okay, now we'll get into the minutes. Need a motion to approve the special and regular meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee, December 16th, 2020, and the special meeting minutes, December 21st, 2020. Place them on file. So motion by Ms. Clark, second on by Mr. Dillon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Permission to enter, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you. Uh, the permissions this, uh, for this meeting are within your packet. The recommendation is approval as written. Uh, staff is available if there are any questions.
Any questions on the floor about permission to enter? Seeing none, need a motion to approve the, uh, permission to enter by Mr. Houghey, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Mr. Houghey?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darity?
Yes.
Six aces, one absent approved.
Uh, next we have memorials. Uh, we'll have in darkened chambers, a moment of silence for Joanne Georges, wife of Paul Georges, United Teachers of Lowell President, Glenda Roulette, retired Shaughnessy School Teacher, and mother of Kathleen McLaughlin, Moore's School Principal. If we could all stand for a moment of silence. Is there? Oh, I'm sorry, there's one more at the bottom. Uh, Evangeline Relice, retired school teacher, Lowell School Teacher. May they rest in peace. We'll dim the lights. Thank you. Um, we're into motions. Uh, motion tonight by Connie Martin, who is unable to, uh, attend, but wants to go on with the motion, um, requesting that all bad bills must be first submitted to the school committee for review and approval before being forwarded to the city for payment. Need a second on the motion. Ms. Darity, you have, you have Councilor Mercier's name tagged up, but, okay. Thank you, that's better. All right, so any questions, Ms. Darity?
Uh, yes, I just wanted to say I totally support this motion. I know that the superintendent has put together some information for the committee about, uh, the whole bad bills issue, and I would ask that we get to, um, hear that presentation at our next meeting, along with the, you know, we could do a discussion when Ms. Martin can be here.
Sure, thank you. Any other discussion? Mr. Dillon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, are we talking about any action to, to the way we operate? Any policy change, or is this just requesting a report on?
Yeah, I think it's, well, it's.
I mean, what do we, what's the action here?
Um, I'd have to double check if it's a policy or not, but she's just requesting that bad bills be submitted to the school committee before they're ever change, um, presented over to the city council, so.
Okay, yeah, but are we gonna have more discussion on our next meeting?
Oh, yeah, next meeting, when Connie's here, we'll.
Okay.
Go over it.
All right, sure, thanks.
It's just, uh, yeah, another check and balance, I guess.
All right, thank you.
If you're all in favor of the motion, say aye. Motion passes. Reports of Superintendent, eight one, COVID update. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Dr. Hall, our chief operating officer, will share with the committee our update on COVID-19. We did see for the first time in a long time, uh, incremental, uh, downtick in both the positivity rate as well as the, uh, incidence rate. Uh, so Dr. Hall will give you an update there, as well as an update on the areas of, uh, request from the committee from the last joint meeting with the Board of Health. Uh, Dr. Hall?
Sure, thank you, Dr. Boyd. So as you can see on this slide, for the second straight week, uh, there was a decline in both the average daily incident rate per 100,000 and the percent positivity rate. We're now at 91.1 and 10.8. And as requested, here are the, uh, numbers of students and staff, um, that have tested positive and/or been quarantined, and as I've stressed at other meetings, uh, I don't think the quarantining number is bad or information, uh, per se, but it just gives you an idea of the logistical, uh, impact of COVID and covering those classes and having people out of school and having to flex over to remote learning with staff. And then as requested, we've now broken this down by school. At the next meeting, uh, we hope to have, um, percentages, so you'll see how many, um, staff are in the school physically when there's the 3% or the 25% as a comparison, uh, going forward. And then as Dr. Boyd mentioned, um, in late December, there was a meeting, a joint meeting with the Board of Health when health metrics and other ideas were, uh, discussed with the school committee. And the Board of Health, as you can see in this slide, um, the school committee established projected goals in regards to when certain percentages of students would return to in-person learning, and the idea was that the committee would continue to collaborate with the Board of Health and have a meeting prior to these dates in order to determine if it was appropriate to hold to that date. Um, presently, we're aiming to have a, uh, meeting on January 18th, but we're still, um, shoring up forums for both, um, bodies for that date, but it is projected to be that week. Additionally, at that joint meeting, uh, the committee, uh, stressed, uh, that it wanted, um, continual reports on the items that I've listed that would support returning those amounts of students at particular days, and particularly, uh, PPE availability and options for improvement, um, continue to review facility readiness and improvements, uh, monitor availability of increased testing, uh, work to increase, um, the availability of contact tracing, and, um, continue to provide information on vaccine availability. Um, many of you all have seen too, that they pushed back the flu vaccine deadline, so it's no longer, um, early, uh, January as previously required. It's, uh, now back, I believe, uh, in February, but we'll continue to provide updates in regards to that. Uh, with that, I don't have any further information, subject to your questions.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have any idea of when we can expect our staff to be able to be vaccinated?
Uh, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Vice Chair, we haven't gotten any additional update since the governor announced that educators would be within Phase Two, which is to begin in February. Phase One is currently underway, uh, related to school committee, um, staff. However, school nurses were added to Phase One. Uh, we just had that update, um, from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education today. Uh, so school nurses were moved up into Phase One. That's underway right now. We haven't gotten specific dates as to when they will get access, only that they have been moved up. Uh, Phase Two scheduled to begin in February, it includes a number of individuals, which is an important caution because February to April is a long timeframe. Now, there is a, um, a call with the commissioner tomorrow where I would expect to receive an update on that. Other states have already started to roll out to school personnel, uh, so I would expect to get an update there. I'm hopeful, as I have been, that the advocacy around school opening and the advocacy around school personnel, um, enables our teachers to be an early part of Phase Two, um, but I don't have confirmation on that yet for Massachusetts.
Okay, and I might, I would like to make a suggestion, if at all possible, when you're in conversations with them, if, if the city can have a facility that can be open 24/7 to give out vaccinations, so that we can get everyone vaccinated in a timely fashion as opposed to, uh, a nine-to-five kind of setup, I think would be probably more practical for us. If we can possibly set that up, we could use the arena, we could use the auditorium, uh, the, the fieldhouse at the high schools, the auditorium at the high school. I mean, there are a lot of venues that we could use in the city, as long as we could get a staff that would be fit, willing to work 24/7, or, you know, at least staffing it for 24/7. We can do it with hospitals, why can't we do it with the vaccinations? Just putting that out there.
Good suggestion, yep. Bring it forward. Anything else on the report? Thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the next is an update on your school assignment policy. Uh, as a reminder, for the committee, there was a temporary adjustment to your policy for this current year, which is scheduled, uh, to revert back to your standard policy at the conclusion of this year. So it is, this is an update that's necessary for the committee in order for us to receive guidance, so that we can bring back to you if it's desired by the committee for a policy recommendation ahead of kindergarten registration. Uh, so there is no action required tonight, but it is an important update where we would like to receive guidance. Ms. Phillips, who heads up this work for us, will share with you, uh, the intended step, next steps, as well as you will see at the end, some questions she has for the committee to receive your guidance. Uh, Ms. Phillips?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, school committee members, Dr. Boyd, and cabinet colleagues and audience. Um, as, as Dr. Boyd mentioned, this will be an update on the student assignment policy analysis. Our assignment policy went through, through several changes since its initial adoption, um, in January for the 2020-21 school year. And so, um, today we, I will take you through what that original policy looked like, um, what the revised policy, the temporary policy included, and then, um, provide some, some information on, on ways we can, um, proceed with developing a, a policy for your consideration for 21-22. Next slide, please. Oh, I'm like. So one thing, one thing I do want to say, um, as I begin this presentation, is that we will, um, continue to maintain an equity lens as we approach the school assignment process, and that, um, that any, um, analysis that we conduct, any research that we conduct, we're always gonna keep, um, our students' best interests at the forefront and ensure that, um, all students have access to a high-quality education, access to all of the educational opportunities that our schools offer, ultimately resulting in us eliminating racial, ethnic, linguistic achievement and opportunity gaps, ensuring equitable funding and resources across our schools, and engaging all of our families with courtesy, dignity, respect, and cultural understanding. So everything we put forward, um, will, will be through that lens. So.
Next slide, right?
Next slide, thank you, page three. Um, so again, quickly, I'll give an overview of the original school assignment policy, the temporary school assignment policy, and then discussion on process and policy development for next year. Next slide. So in January, we adopted a school assignment policy, and there are two ways that, that our students receive seats, um, currently in our public schools, Lowell Public Schools. One is through the lottery, so that's a pre-registration period, largely it's for kindergarten, where if the demand for certain schools exceed the number of seats, um, during this pre-registration period, we run a lottery for that school. Following the pre-registration period, um, students are placed on a first-come, first-served basis, um, and it's based on space in schools, as well as even distribution of, of, um, class sizes across schools. And so you'll see here that after the published registration period, decisions are made based on space availability, sibling preference, ethnicity balance, and place of residence. So currently, um, the district is following a consent decree from several decades ago, which, um, which states that we have to have a goal of, of balanced eth, racial diversity in our schools, and that, um, each school needs to maintain or have a goal of 72% minority, that's the word used in, in the, um, consent decree, 72% minority, 28% white, give or take 10%. So if the school is 62% to 82% minority, it would fall within the consent decree. So in August, um, we presented a temporary school policy.
Sorry, next slide?
Sorry, next slide.
Yep.
Uh-huh. Uh, we presented a revised policy. Um, this was largely due to, um, a reduction in transportation seats and, um, and also for kindergarten, our desire to ensure that all families had an opportunity to opt into in-person, in-person, um, learning, if that was their choice, and that transportation would not be an issue for them, especially because of the, um, it being a very foundational year for literacy and numeracy. And so the revised policy states that students in grades one through 12 would attend the school they were assigned to the, the prior year. Anyone in fourth grade would be enrolled in the school, which is in their feeder pattern. And then kindergarten students would be assigned a temporary 2020-21 placement based on a school within walking distance of their home. However, their assignment prior to this would be honored for the 2021-22 school year. So some students got placed in a school that was closer to them for this year. However, if through the lottery they had received a different placement, that's the placement that they would go into in first grade. Now, one of the considerations for, for policy would be around, um, whether those students can get a priority if they wanted to stay in the school that they were assigned to for kindergarten. But right now, the policy states that you would go back to the placement that you had prior to, um, prior to, to, um, you know, the, the impact of, of the pandemic and us having to, to shift that in order to reduce transportation seats. Next slide, please. So this is where, um, where we, we would like to receive your feedback on how should we revisit the current school assignment process. Um, we can revert back to the 2020-21 process, which was, um, a lottery and then placement based on first-come, first-served. Or we could continue with the revised policy where students are placed in a school that is within walking distance of their home. So some of the pros of, of a policy in assigning students close to their home is that it can strengthen the connection between home and school, and it can help to streamline, streamline the registration process. So right now, family's first point of contact is at the Family Resource Center. They can come in, but don't always receive their placement the same day because of the process of looking at different class sizes, looking at, at different, um, priorities. So if students are assigned to a, a school close to their home, they know automatically what school they'll be going to. Um, it can also reduce transportation costs and ride time on buses. Now, the downside to this, um, could be a socioeconomic divide, right? So now students will be going to a school, um, within their neighborhood, and depending on the socioeconomic, um, status of their neighborhood, there are impacts to schools. And we know that we need to ensure educational equity and access. Um, one thing I will mention is that in the preliminary research we've been doing, um, we are already seeing that socioeconomic divide, so regardless of the policy, that is something that we need to, to think about and address. Um, and then school building capacity, that's enrollment capacity. How many students can each school building hold? And will we be able to, um, evenly distribute students across the city? Next slide, please. So we have a lot of learning to do, um, over the next couple months, well, next two months. So these are the process steps that we could take, um, if that's your recommendation. So we can go more deeply into the learnings of the current year. Um, that's looking at, at the outcome of the temporary policy. Again, all students were placed at a school close to their home. We can look at the racial diversity, and how does that compare to, to prior years? Uh, we can look at the socioeconomic diversity. How does this year's diversity compare to prior years? Um, we can look at the capacity numbers and any challenges that we had with ensuring, um, even placement across our schools in the city. Next, we could look at a study of the current student body to inform future projections. So even though our students are, are distributed across the, the city right now in, in schools of their choice, we can look at their addresses and put them in a school for, um, a study, right? For, for a hypothetical, um, study to project what the district could look like five years down the road, um, to see again, what are the impacts to racial diversity, socioeconomic diversity, um, capacity of facilities? Also look at the impact of magnet schools and citywide schools, and how does that impact, um, the other schools? And then also transportation, and how does that, um, you know, how, does, how does that cut costs or increase costs, you know, based on a different assignment of students? Um, and other areas that we do wanna look at, if this is the way we proceed, is also our McKinney-Vento homeless families and where they're being placed, um, and, and are they being distributed, you know, across the city or in schools close to, to, um, their placements, their shelters? Um, and then also English learners. One thing that, that we do know is that about 60% of our kindergarten students apply during the pre-application period, and for the most part, um, the majority of students get their first, get their first, um, their first choice, but about 40% of our students come after that, and those students are often our newcomer students, our refugee students, our homeless students, um, our, our students who are new to the district, and they often then end up with a second or third choice and often get locked out of a lottery school. So again, this is, uh, an opportunity for us to truly look at access and things we may need to do differently, so that, um, so that our, all of our students have access to the program and the school that would best suit their needs. So this would require, in addition to a study and research, community outreach, conducting a family survey, um, providing the findings of the survey, as well as our study of the data to the families, to our families, to our communities, um, having listening and feedback sessions to inform a final, to inform a final, um, recommendation. And one other piece I wanna mention around what we already know, the, the majority of our schools, um, if not all of our schools do fall within the minority-majority percentages of the consent decree, but what we are seeing is, um, is that all of our schools are not reflecting all of the diversity of Lowell. So because minority includes all cultures, races, backgrounds, we can have a school that's 60% one group and 40% white, right, or 35% white, and that meets diversity, and, um, or we can have a school that's 80%, you know, one, one group. But those are things that, that we wanna be exact and intentional when we talk about diversity, because a lot of times we are thinking that all cultures are represented within the school, and that's not the case. And we, we have a large percentage of students of color, um, and, and we are seeing trends across neighborhoods already, um, but socioeconomically, that's kind of the greatest distinction we're seeing, and so the question is what, how do we address any, um, challenges or barriers that come with, with that socioeconomic, um, divide? Next page. So here's a recommended timeline that, that we could take. As soon as next week, a subcommittee, and I believe it's the Equity Subcommittee, that, that, um, would lead the school assignment policy work. Um, we could review the findings of the current year, how did the students get distributed, uh, what are the pros and cons of, of how this year, um, this year's school assignment rolled out. Um, shortly thereafter, we could look at the projection report. Shortly thereafter, we could look at the projection report. Again, that's looking at the students who are currently enrolled in Lowell Public Schools. We know their addresses. We know where they would have gone had we assigned schools based on address. And then we can, can, you know, project what the racial balance, economic balance, gender balance, you know, might look like. The community engagement could follow toward the end of January, again, conducting a family survey to understand, you know, the, the wants of our families. And then also provide information to them so that everyone has accurate information to make, to provide input. And then we could bring back to the Subcommittee a review of the community engagement, the input, all of the study, the data. And then we would need to make a recommendation and have a final policy adopted no later than the March 3rd School Committee meeting. Next slide. So some guiding questions for the discussion. Are the implications for current kindergarten students clear regarding their current temporary placement? Does the current process I've just walked us through, including the Subcommittee meetings, meet the committee's expectations? Is this the path you'd like us to take? And will the recommended timeline for analysis work for your decision-making process?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the presentation. I do want to note within the, within the guiding questions, should this process of analysis and deliberation prior to a policy recommendation in March be sufficient and adequate for the committee? It would require a motion to send it to Subcommittee so that we can begin that work. You see that the Subcommittee work begins as early as next week to make sure that we can bring forward a policy recommendation ahead of the kindergarten registration period. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll stand for questions.
Okay, Mr. Dillon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, no, I think this is a great report and I can deal with that, with that timeline, certainly. I, I think it's the right direction for us to be heading right now. I think community building in this city is going to be a huge part of post-pandemic life. And I think that, you know, neighborhoods are important. And I think, you know, there are a lot of benefits that could come out of, at least, certainly out of doing this research. And, you know, making, making sure that it's something that, that we can do. And I think that we can. You know, the, if we believe in the Renaissance program that this administration has, you know, has touted and, and put into place in this district, you know, then you, then you have to think that we're doing all that we can to make sure that our weakest performing schools are, don't stay that way for very long or that they are, you know, they're getting more resources and they're getting all the help they can. You know, and so, you know, a lot of what we are doing administratively, you know, sort of lines up to, to, to make a situation where kids are going to school closer to home doable. You know, and I, I mean, that, that Renaissance program was, the goal is high-quality seats for every child, right? I mean, you know, and that's what we're looking for. We're not, you know, we're, we're looking to get out of what the thought in the past was, that there are bad schools in certain neighborhoods. And I think that we're on our way to making sure that that, that can happen. You know, and there, there are, you're going to hear plenty from me about all the benefits to, to why this is a good direction to go in, but I, I will definitely support it and I'd make the motion if, to send it to Subcommittee if need be. Thanks.
Motion by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Mr. Hoey, Mr. Dakota.
In keeping with this presentation, I'll wait on, to, to provide you with another motion on this, too. So I'll wait.
Could you say that one more time?
I have another motion I want to put, to put out there, so I will, I'll wait until we finish this particular motion.
Okay, all right. Any discussion on the motion or what we're talking about? Mr., Ms. Darden?
I hear myself better when I don't have the mask on, sorry. I don't have any problems with sending it to Subcommittee and moving forward. I do have a number of concerns. My first thing that came to mind was what we had promised the people that got kindergarten placement that was temporary. Because it seems like this is a very aggressive schedule. We have been, those of us who've been in the city and looking at the schools for a while, have been struggling with this dilemma of our commitment to diversity and equity. And I think the socioeconomic piece is huge, huge, to keep that in mind. And our commitment and understanding of the value of neighborhood schools and balancing those two. First of all, we have an issue, which I think Mr. Dakota will be addressing later, with not having enough schools in every neighborhood. Secondly, you know, it's a very complicated puzzle. And I think a lot of really good things in this report about looking at projecting out five years, if we make this change, what that's going to mean. Really upfront, valuing the equity, valuing the diversity and, as part of all your decision-making. But it's a very aggressive agenda to do it in such a, a short timeline. So I guess my reservations are, why do we have to do it so quickly? Does that really give us enough, enough time? And if the reason to do it quick is we want to implement it next year, what does that say to those families that we said, this is temporary? We're going to put you in your neighborhood school this year only. Are we going to renege on that promise to families? So those are just some of my concerns. I think that we are all on the same page. We want our kids to be in neighborhood schools whenever possible. We want our schools to reflect the diversity, which is one of our greatest strengths as a city. Other issues like where are the homeless kids ending up? I think you make an excellent point on that, that if they're coming in late to the registration process, I think there's an easy fix to that. Every school has reserved a certain number of seats for homeless kids. These are our most vulnerable students, our homeless students. And they shouldn't all be in one school that happens to have the space. They should be, I mean, if we're talking true equity, they should be spread out because it's going to be better for the school, better for the student in terms of resources. So those are just the things that are flying in my head. I think we do want to move forward. I don't want to get into a situation where we've set an extremely aggressive timeline for a very complicated issue that then we're trying to rush through and we get to the 11th hour and we haven't got all the i's dotted and the t's crossed. So that's my primary concern, because I do believe the intention of the administration is to be true to those values about diversity, equity, and that includes the socioeconomic piece. But I don't want to renege on our promise to those kindergarten families. And I don't want to rush something and then not do it to the full percent. I think we could give ourselves more time and do it more thoughtfully and maybe end up with a, you know, still, all those research that you talked about, the community outreach, the five-year project, all those pieces are definitely part of it. It's just very aggressive. One month, one month, and then boom, we're making a decision March 3rd. I worry about that.
Yes, I want to make sure that we clarify expectation here. One, we're not presuming what a policy recommendation might be for the committee. However, I will share with you right now, there will not be a policy recommendation of completely upending our K through 12 policy within that timeframe. What you just suggested, Ms. Committee Member, is a policy adjustment that could come to you as a result of this related to certain seats within schools. Other committee members I know have received calls from families who are currently kindergartners and saying, is it possible for me to stay for first grade? Those types of policy recommendations could come, but those are also complex. All of them have a ripple effect. So this is not to suggest in any way that there's going to be a policy recommendation to completely upend the entire K through 12 system at that time. It is instead giving you a timeframe that allows you to make decisions that you could enact for next year. Because if you prolong it beyond the kindergarten registration process and the registration process, then you're limiting your ability to make decisions ahead of next year. So what the, what we will undertake, and I think what you've seen from me since I've, I've joined you here in this district, is that I allow you the flexibility to make immediate decisions that are informed, but also we don't assume what those decisions would be and we allow you the flexibility of options to continue that timeframe going forward. Now, I say that and not really try to make sure that I'm cautious, because I do understand the many conversations that preceded all of us that are before you right now related to this and all of the assumptions that were made and the discussions that were had. Certainly, we have a lot of internal discussions around this. Matter of fact, there are many differences of opinions around what school choice and neighborhood schools even mean within the many stakeholder groups throughout this community. So I would really caution the committee to say, all of those past experiences, let's put those on hold and allow ourselves to analyze it. If through that discussion, what ultimately the committee determines is to go forward as is for another year, you have that option at your disposal. But if you don't go through a process of analysis right now, I do also want the committee to know you are foregoing essentially making any adjustments to next year, because we do need to be respectful of our families. We do need to communicate out to them. And if you prolong it beyond March, even though this year, believe it or not, as long as this year has felt, it is right around the corner. If we prolong it beyond that, then we can't get the communication out in a respectful way to allow the committee to reasonably make any kind of policy adjustment ahead of next school year. This is not something that you can do in August with schools starting in September. That's just not how this works, all right? So the timeline is aggressive, but don't assume and don't, don't, let's not assume what the outcome might be, what the recommendation might be. And certainly, I would, I'm open to the fact that through that Subcommittee work, the recommendation may come back. Let's continue a more, a more in-depth analysis, if that be the will of the committee. But there are certainly some findings here and some initial learnings that we should process through. I do think, certainly when I was even interviewing for this job, there were a lot of people that assumed that when we talked about the racial balancing consent decree, that somehow our schools were racially balanced. And what you just heard from our Chief Equity and Engagement Officer, even though you meet the consent decree, that is not the case here in a community as diverse as ours. And what you, what we've also learned is that there are significant shifts and could be significant shifts around economic divides across the city, which is something that has to be forefront within the discussion. There is a literature base around not, not talking about, within a conversation of segregation, also understanding economic segregation. And I don't know that that's been at the forefront of these conversations before, and it has to be. So I think well, well said, Committee Member, and I appreciate you putting that on the dock, because for all those listening, let's not assume that what we're talking about here is a full up-end K through 12, all, that's just not good educational practice. You saw here, we made a decision around kindergarten. You can start to move this in, in a responsible way if there are adjustments that work with our needs of our family, that work with the needs of our teachers to create those connections with kids, and that work with the desires of our community at large while maintaining our steadfast commitment to equity. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Clark, and then Mr. Hoey.
Thank you. So I'm just curious, I agree, it's, it's aggressive, it's ambitious, but I, I think it's important. But I'm curious about how many hours and approximately will it take to, for your team to really go through this data? And then also, do we have the additional data that we're looking for as part of a system that would include minority breakdown more than just minority versus white as well as socioeconomic status? So is that, is that information readily available to us?
Ms. Phillips?
So racial, racial identity, yes, for students. The challenge we may have is with our Brazilian students. And many will, do not identify as Hispanic. And then among the other categories are likely to check white. And so we would have to really figure out, and that's our largest growing population here in Lowell. And so that's something that, that might be different for us, but we need to figure that out, how to, how to understand, you know, our, our largest growing population. We could do that by language, often students indicating their home language. But otherwise, we do have a good idea, idea of racial demographics, socioeconomic demographics. You know, we are a 100% free and reduced lunch district because we have a very high number of, of, you know, students with need. But I, I do believe that there are some other economic factors that we can, that we can look to. And then we, we know our McKinney-Vento students, we know our Yale students. So it won't be easy, but we do have the data to, to do what we can do, right? And if at any point it's not moving us forward, then we, then we can make decisions at that point.
Thank you. And just one other question. Is the consent decree by school or by grade level at school?
My understanding is that it's by school.
By school, okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hoey?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. This report was good. I, I loved, we're going to have three Subcommittee's. We're also going to do a survey of all the parents. And we're going to have a regular School Committee meeting on March 3rd. Even though this School Committee, I think, in the past year has had their fair share of Subcommittee's, I think we're going to accomplish what we need with this. And the one thing that I thought Mr. Dillon brought out tonight that concerns me the most is obviously underperforming schools like the Robinson, the Sullivan, the Green Ouch. I think this work that you're going to put in with equity and fairness could help out the Sullivan School immensely. I think when we look at demographics and we're moving in a lot of people from Centerville to come over to the Sullivan School, we've had issues with that over the years. So I think that motion that we're going to hear later on would be another big reason why we need something in Centerville. But I'm all for these Subcommittee's. And it's, what Subcommittee? Equity Subcommittee? Okay, yes. I'm just happy with all this, Mayor. I think when we're done doing all these Subcommittee's, we're going to come up with something really good. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just, what Subcommittee are we talking about here?
Superintendent?
Sure. The Subcommittee and the referral to Subcommittee is a choice of the, of the committee as a whole, hence the need for the motion. However, the recommendation from Ms. Phillips is the Equity and Access Subcommittee. Ms. Phillips, do you have the membership of the Equity and Access Subcommittee?
Yes, that's chaired by Committee Member Dougherty. And the other two members are Ms. Clark and Mr. Hoey.
But the committee as a whole can choose to send it to any of the committees at your disposal. That's a decision of the committee.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it, it crosses a lot of different layers, this, the whole conversation, you know, so.
Anyone can attend any Subcommittee as well. We often do.
I understand that. But it's, you know, it's important to have it discussed in the right Subcommittee. You can't just toss it to one committee and just, there we go. I don't know, we should have some discussion around it, I think.
Oh, I missed that. What's the discussion on, which Subcommittee to send it to? Is that?
There's, well, I just, and we can't get into a, we can't get into a process where we're just, oh, I think it goes to this one and I take it. I, I mean, we should, figure out what's best. I mean, I don't know, what, I, let's do what's right.
Okay. Mr. Darden, what did you have to say?
If I could, I could, I could add some insight here. So at the time of the mayor transition, we did further spell out the Subcommittee's, at which point there were further definition of each of the committees prior to assignment. And I know the mayor, I don't want to speak on the mayor's behalf, I know he put a lot of deliberation into each one and we did discuss the bullet points within. So the bullet points of description at the point of assignment, you, if you recall, there were very short descriptions at that point. I know it's been a long time since last, I think it was January or February at those assignments. This was listed within the Equity and Access Subcommittee at that time. It doesn't preclude, of course, decisions of the full body, but I don't know if that adds any insight at, into the discussion.
Well, that sounds like the right committee to send it to. So let's, I'll take a look at it and double-check it, but for right now, that's. at it and double-check it, but for right now, uh, that's what we're talking about, so...
That sounds fine, I just like, you know, I mean, we should think about it when we're making these decisions and throwing them to subcommittees, I feel like sometimes we don't, so, thank you.
Yep, no, good point. And a point of clarification, the dissent decree is, is, goes by zones, not schools, not classes, but zones, school zones. Alright, if that helps. Um, alright, so all in favor of the past motion? That was, yep, by, and then Mr. Dakota, you had something?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in light of all of this conversation, um, I think it would be nice, I'd like to propose a motion that the Superintendent, um, works with the City Manager Donahue and/or CFO Connor Don Baldman to explore the feasibility of acquiring St. Louis campus. The multiple uses that we could use that facility would certainly help the school department in so many areas, not the least of which would be to provide us with another building for a middle school for Centerville, which is crucial to really getting back to neighborhood schools. It would give us an opportunity to have another day school in the city and another, and, and a citywide pre-K, along with the possibility of moving central office to that campus. So there, I mean, multiple facilities, multiple ways of using that facility that we don't wanna let slip through our fingers. I, I really believe that this is something we need to not drop the ball and, and pursue with a vengeance. I think we need this desperately, and I really believe it's, it'd be a, a good thing for the city to acquire that, uh, and, and for the neighborhood as well. I think if you wanna, uh, people have lived in this neighborhood for, for decades and they know that the, this, there was always a school there, there was always a church there, and so they know what, what to expect, but if you, if you sell this property to a, a developer and suddenly you've got 40 different condos that are gonna be in there, it's gonna be a whole different clientele in that neighborhood, changes the whole venue.
Another burden to the school.
You know, so I think it, it would be a great, uh, a great asset for the city, so that, putting that out there, that, that motion.
So, motion for feasibility study to take a look at, feasibility to use the St. Louis school, seconded by Ms. Artie. Mr. Dillon?
Uh, I was, yeah, I was looking for a second, but I agree, um, with Mr. Dakota, I, um, I think it might be a, a situation where we need to spend now to, to save us later and, and, um, you know, relieve our school system down the line. I think it would, uh, be much more beneficial than the, than the dollar bills sound like, so, I, I certainly back that motion. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And I did wanna mention, I don't wanna speak out of turn, but I think you might remember, Ms. Artie, um, I don't wanna mention any names, but I think if we were able to build another middle school in the city, I think we've already named it, right? We may have done that years ago? Yeah, okay. Alright, so all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Okay. Um, so now we're up to update on diversity teaching leaders. Do you wanna let the speakers go first, or do you wanna do the report first?
I think it might benefit the committee to hear the report and the update, um, given that there is no action being taken, you might hear from speakers that have more information than the committee, uh, so this might contextualize, um...
Okay.
Some aspect of it, there's a, so this, um, Ms. Phillips, our Chief Equity and Engagement Officer, will share out with you the update on our diversifying teacher leaders initiative, diversifying our staff, also another, uh, significant initiative by this committee that has long-term implications. It's important to note here, as with the previous presentation, one thing that I've suggested before, with all of the, uh, trauma and, uh, instability that this pandemic has provided, this school district, unlike many others, has not put the pause on the long-term improvement of the district while we simply focused on everything that is certainly, um, rather complex and could be all-consuming of responding to the pandemic itself. So, as you're seeing with, uh, an analysis of our student assignment policy here, there's been significant progress as we move towards long-term, ensuring that the demographics of our staff also reflect the demographics of our students, uh, which again, I wanna make sure, I think, uh, Committee Member Dougherty's points before, to help contextualize it for everyone, this is not talking about an overnight type work, any more so than the school assignment policy would be. This is complex work, multifaceted, so this is one update of one initiative within a broader set of strategic, uh, of strategy within our strategic plan. So, uh, Ms. Phillips, if you could, um, and then there are two speakers, I think contextualizing the committee, then hear from the speakers might work better, Mr. Mayor, but there is no action recommended within this report, so either direction that you choose, Mr. Mayor's work's fine.
Yeah, we'll do the report.
Ms. Phillips?
So, as, um, as Dr. Boynton mentioned, this is multifaceted work. It, it did begin, um, early on with the diversification goals at, at Central Office. We've seen a, a great shift increase in our Central Office, um, but we know that we need to diversify at every level of our organization, and so, um, today I will speak about, um, our diversifying teacher leaders program, um, but this is just a, one, one component of a broader strategy to diversify the workforce. And I did wanna mention that, um, even though we came in and this was a goal, hearing from our students, especially in the spring, hearing from our students through the portrait of a graduate process, we know that this is something, um, that they want to see within their schools and their educational experience as well, and this is, um, a resounding theme that we also heard through the portrait of a graduate process with our community and family outreach. Next slide, please. So, um, the vision for our program was for students to see their racial and ethnic backgrounds represented in excellent teachers and leaders within their school by increasing our diverse teaching workforce and increasing retention rates of our current diverse educators in the district. And, um, I, I borrowed this quote here, um, the concept of, of windows and mirrors, right? And this was initially introduced by, by Emily Style for the National Seed Project, and a mirror is a story that reflects your own, or an experience that reflects your own culture, it helps you build your own identity, um, it reflects your lived experiences, and then the window offers you a view into someone else's experience, um, their lived experience and their identi- identities that are different from you. And in this quote, you'll see, um, from a high school principal, unnamed principal in the East Coast, "Windows and mirrors, mirrors, students should be able to see mirror images of themselves leading classrooms, but if they're students of color, they just get windows and are constantly seeing other people." And so, um, as I said, our students, our families have shared that they want both, right? They want to learn and understand other perspectives, and they also want to develop their, their identity, see their culture represented within, um, their learning experiences. Next slide. So there's a lot of research around, um, around the benefits of a diverse workforce. Um, I've pulled some of the, um, the, the studies for you, but there are many, many studies that, that show that positive, positive exposure to individuals from a variety of races helps to reduce stereotypes, um, to reduce unconscious implicit biases, and helps to promote cross-cultural social understanding. I did borrow this slide from, um, we do have two teach, oh, next slide. We do have two teacher leaders who, um, as part of their policy project, they selected, um, diversifying teachers and recruitment, and they pulled together research, um, I borrowed this slide from them, there are many districts recognizing that this work needs to happen, and there are teachers of color out there that are currently in programs, but also, um, you know, there's a need for us to develop our own pathways to continue that, that diverse pipeline. And so, um, this is something that was pulled from, from Boston, and you can see that they have an outsized market share of educators of color. We are looking at other districts and partnering and understanding, you know, what worked, what didn't, to develop our own, um, to develop our own plan for what will work here. So here is a current snapshot, this was taken from our data system last month, and this is for all employees district-wide. So this is not specific to teachers, um, we are working on, on getting that teacher-specific data, but for now, out of 2,635 employees, um, you'll see the numbers of staff who have self-identified within the different categories. Um, at the bottom, you'll see that, that we have not, um, we don't know about 258 staff, um, they're unknown right now. It is voluntary to, to identify, so, but of those who have identified, this is our breakdown, and you'll see that, um, 2,054 of our staff identify as, as white. So, we have, um, we are the recipient of several competitive grants, um, one is the DESI Teacher Diversification Pilot Program, um, that's, that's led by Dr. Hall's office, um, along with, uh, Roth Yan, our Assistant HR Director. Um, there's also another grant that, that I did not include on here, and that's the Educator Pathway, um, program that's being developed at Lowell High School, so again, to, um, increase that pipeline from our, our own student, diverse student body. And then, um, the second bullet is a grant that we received from the Parker Foundation, and this has been a tremendous, um, grant and commitment toward diversifying the workforce. And, um, this grant is, is a partnership between the school district, UMass Lowell, and Project Learn, and there are three components to it, next slide. Um, it should be the core program component slide. So, recruitment, hiring, and retention. And given the, the, um, you know, the, the challenges of the pandemic, we wondered what would we be able to pull off this year as relates to retention, or as relates to, um, recruitment? But one of the things we realized was, one of the things that makes others want to come here is, um, the current experience that our teachers are having here, right? So our diverse teachers, how do they view their experience here in Lowell? Are they feeling a sense of community? Are they feeling valued? Are they feeling like they have leadership opportunities? So, we, um, decided that the starting point for this grant would be to invest in our current diverse teachers and give them the opportunity to have teacher leader opportunities. So they are going through a year-long, um, program of self-development, um, they are, are creating a community of practice among other diverse teachers, um, they are all engaging in a policy project, um, incredible projects from their perspective on how to improve, um, the district from their lens. And, um, and I wanna mention that this work has, has been incredibly successful. Um, I do believe some of the, one of the participants will speak, um, to their experience through public comment, but I also want to acknowledge, um, Ms. Jamie Moody, she is an assistant principal at the Butler Middle School, and the success of this really has been attributed to her leadership, incredible assistant principal, but in addition to that, has really coached and mentored, um, our diverse teacher leaders, and, um, I really need to acknowledge her because it, she's a tremendous asset within this district. And so, that's our retent, our retention component. So, all of our diverse teachers have also committed to several hours of recruitment, um, of new candidates, so that will file, fall under our recruitment segment, um, getting people to, getting the word out about, um, the great opportunities here in Lowell. And then we'll also need to look at our hiring practices, and are there barriers to our hiring practices? And, um, we've already implemented, um, some non-bias training in our hiring teams, that's something that, that we'll continue to do, um, and little by little, we'll be able to diversify this way. We are committed to a sustainable practice as well as a, a, a real shift in our organization, you know, in how we, in how we, um, conduct the business of recruitment, hiring, and, and retention. Next slide, please. Alright, so our year-one goals, so again, we, we, um, believe that by first identifying and developing leadership of existing teachers of color, uh, we'll be able to develop that effective foundation to sustain and support coaching. So our intention is that next year, new teachers of color will be matched with a current, um, diverse teacher to ensure that there's a community, um, a community of practitioners for our new, for our new teachers. So, year-one goals were to strengthen our current diverse teachers' pedagogical leadership and mentorship skills, position them to be strong supports for a new cohort, um, and then we wanna ensure that the new teachers that we recruit are successful, they persist, they succeed, um, in their first years of teaching. We wanna develop a community of practice, um, many spoke to being the only one, you know, and, and there is a, um, you know, if you've ever been the only one, you know that that can be lonely, that can be, um, intimidating in some ways, that can be isolating, and so we really are looking to create, um, that, that community of support, welcoming environment, and then a partnership. Um, this grant is in partnership with, um, the College of Education of UMass Lowell. However, we recognize the importance of having many partnerships, we're also, um, establishing a partnership with Salem State, um, University, who has a very large, um, number of, of candidates, pre-service teachers of color, um, but we are looking to, to have partnerships all over to, to bring people within, within the vicinity of Lowell, right? To come and work here and to, um, and to commit to our district. Next slide, please. So next step, uh, we are looking forward to completing the current fellowship program with our current diverse teachers, um, we're preparing for year two, so right now, they are, are, are developing their own, um, their own community of practice, their own pedagogy, but they will transition to being coaches for next year. Um, and then we will be implementing recruitment activities such as virtual events, targeted outreach, um, to increase the pool of diverse applications, um, developing the strategic relationships with colleges and universities. And then the last part is developing a diversity profile for each school building. So earlier, we talked about the diversity of our different buildings, and we want to make sure that, that, um, our students in our different buildings are seeing teachers reflected from their background. And so in order to do that, uh, we will be looking to, to develop this profile where we understand each school building, the breakdown of the students, we understand the current, um, staff within the building, and we start to, in a very strategic and intentional way, look at, um, look at, at the, the openings, right? Look at the opportunities, and where, where is there room for, for growth, you know, um, diversification of our, of our workforce, um, again, providing those mirrors and windows for our students. So that is the work coming, um, moving ahead, we'll be coming back to you at each step, but that's where we are right now.
Thank you. Um, why don't we go to the callers and then we'll, then we'll have the floor, so, who's doing the callers? Latifah?
Um, so the first speaker is Lori Casey.
Okay. So she's coming over the phone or over the...
Over the Zoom.
Okay. Is that gonna show up on the screen, like, in the council meetings, or, okay?
She should...
Alright, just one second, Lori, while we get you up on screen. Okay, you're all set, you have five minutes, just introduce yourself and your address and, and please speak.
My name's Lori Casey, I live in New Hampshire, I am a special ed social worker in the district, and, um, I'm just calling in the support of this diversity group. I've had the privilege of being invited to their trainings, um, as kind of an ally to the group. as kind of an ally to the group. I've been able to attend their Saturday trainings where they've been having outside speakers that have just been elevating their knowledge and routines and their ability to educate our students. And it's been a great privilege and honor to be a part of that group and get to know our BIPOC teachers that are taking this at a time every Saturday and doing additional work to advance their practice, to be available to students so that they can be reflective of seeing themselves in their teachers. So, I'm just very honored that Lowell is committed in doing this and supporting our BIPOC teachers. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Lori. All right, next speaker.
The next speaker is Alejandra Cabrera.
Are you there, Alejandra?
She's in now. Alejandra, can you hear us?
Yep.
Okay, you're all set. Just state your name and address and you have five minutes. Thank you.
Okay, do I start now? I'm scared to leave her.
Yep, no, you can just shut your TV off or whatever you're listening to the meeting on.
All right, my name is Alejandra Cabrera. I'm from 11th Avenue Drive in Cricket. And I just wanted to speak to you all about my experience with the first-time teacher leaders program. So, I'd address to the committee members, Mayor Lakey, Superintendent Boyd. My second year teaching here at Lowell Public Schools. I really started seeing the necessity of connecting with other teachers of color. So, with the help of my support admin, I'm starting an affinity group by my school for teachers of color. And this group has since become a place where we come together to connect and lift each other up and use existing and proven frameworks to make our school more inclusive and equitable place. So, when I saw that Latifah was starting a program that would bridge together teachers of color from all over the district, I absolutely jumped at the opportunity and I'm so glad I did. This group has shown me just the power of what can be accomplished when passionate and like-minded people unify about a single vision. We come together, we connect, and we strategize. And I'm constantly just blown away by the talent and passion of our group. As one of our projects, for example, I am partnering with a group of teachers to create and disseminate a diversity inclusion, diversity equity and inclusion framework for our science curriculum. Through this project, I have collaborated not only with teachers in the district, but curriculum designers from across the state and other district leaders. Additionally, we have received like hours of training from some of the top equity leaders in the state. And those are lessons that we will all take back to our schools, our classrooms, and communities. I have grown as a leader and more importantly, the students of Lowell are the ones that are ultimately going to benefit from our endeavors. When I first started teaching at the districts, one of the things that really shocked me was how surprised students were when they learned that they had a teacher that spoke Spanish like them. So, they would look at me in shock when I interjected into their Spanish conversations. And so, our Spanish-speaking students and other students who speak English in a second language are not used to having a teacher that speaks the same language as them or shared their culture. And that made me extremely sad. So, our students deserve to be able to see themselves in their teachers. And as Latifah was mentioning, this benefits all students. So, we really have to stop to ask the question, why do we have so many teachers from Lowell or district? And, but not enough teachers of color from Lowell and our district despite the fact that our student body is so diverse as we know? And we also ask ourselves, what can we do to change that? How can we retain the teachers of color that we already have in the district? So, these are the kinds of important questions that we ask ourselves through the Diversifying Teacher Leaders Fellowship. And importantly, we work to find solutions. So, the work that we do through the Diversifying Teacher Leaders program on that year is not something we do out of like disdain or anger towards the district. We do it because we love this district. We work together out of love for the district and the students of this district. And we believe that it does have the power to be a more welcoming, affirming, and empowering place for our students, our staff, and our families. So, this project is extremely vital to the health and resilience of our district. And I'm so grateful to be a part of it and hope it's something that can continue and grow. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, anybody have questions, want to lead off? No questions, no questions? Mr. Dillon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. Sorry. Maybe to Ms. Phillips, does this require more training than a typical first-year teacher? Like are more hours? I don't know, like is this on top of our first-year teacher academy training that teach, new teachers would be going through?
Sure, Ms. Phillips?
So, this is for current teachers. We really weren't looking for new teachers.
Oh, okay.
We do have a couple of teachers who are early in their career but have really shown leadership. But this is, this is a voluntary program. They meet once a month on a Saturday.
Okay, no, I was more concerned with, we would have minority teachers coming into work for us than they were having more training to do than the rest of the, you know, than teachers that are white. I just didn't know if it was actually more of a commitment for them than, than the rest of the staff. So, thank you. I guess the only other thing is, you know, there are plenty of, there are plenty of good reasons why, you know, pushing in this direction to diversify our staff can be helpful. But man, when we start talking about minority teachers being more motivated to work with disadvantaged minority students, minority teachers having a higher academic expectations for minority students, I mean, those are tough statements to swallow. I mean, and they're, it seems, you know, it's like, it's a knock on our current staff. Like our current staff cannot possibly connect with our minority population. And so, I guess I'd just caution that we don't need, we don't need that. There are, there are good reasons, you know, for us to be, to making sure our staff is diversified. But man, that's a, it's just tough language. So, I would, you know, I guess I'd advise, you know, we don't even need those in there, to be honest with you. But thank you, it is a good report. I mean, it's good work. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to, I, I guess we're trying to make the connection, right? So, we're not, and I don't want to speak for anybody, but yeah, we're not knocking the current staff. We're just trying to maybe speak towards the connection. So, I think that might be a way to look at it. But Mr. Hoey, you had a question?
If I could, I don't want to cut you off, Mr. Hoey, but I do, speaking as a white man who often, who's worked his entire career largely in urban communities, I can speak to a little bit about certainly how it can be felt. And I can see how Mr. Dillon's hearing it that way. One thing that I think we also need to recognize is that any research that's cited is never speaking to a sample size of one or even a few. This is talk, this is research that's using a representative sample of some type, for some type of study. It is interesting, and I think what we have to start sharing out more, is it's interesting to see how that literature base reports and what those findings are of that literature base, which is different than perhaps your and my experiences, and it certainly should not be and hopefully is never heard by any of our staff members as suggesting that this is reflective of their individual desire. Certainly, and I, I think I can personally relate, when you hear this stuff initially and certainly as a white male teacher and then a white male principal, a white male superintendent within urban communities, largely diverse communities, you hear this in a certain way. So, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the point of privilege to emphasize what Mr. Dillon is saying, that it shouldn't, I hope it's not heard that way by any, but instead to say, let's be reflective of what the literature base is saying. Because when we're making decisions district-wide based on broadening a large pool of candidates and making decisions for people, hiring decisions going forward, we need to be aware also of the full literature base as well as aware of our individual experiences. So, I hope for all of our teachers out there, first and foremost, please do know we are, this is not in any way suggestive of what any current teacher may feel or may suggest. Instead, it's, within these types of presentations, this is, you can see a couple of citations from different, different bodies of literature. And Ms. Phillips has an entire array, so she can pull from many of them. So, thank you, Mr. Dillon, for pointing that out. And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me that point of privilege.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hoey.
Thanks, Mayor. A few things, a few comments I want to make. Eight percent of mass teachers are teachers of color. It says three percent are black, three percent Latino, and two percent Asian. That's our real big issue. The people aren't going into this profession, you know? And what I do like is the report that you're giving me here, I'm going to be as quick as I can, but it states, black Native American, one, Asian, hundred and three, Pacific Islander, one, black, fifty-six, Native American, four, six Latinos, Latino Asian white, one, Latino black, five, Latino black white, two, Latino Pacific Islander white, one, Latino white, a hundred forty-three. Now, we hit the number that bothers me, 254 white people. Okay. Probably seventy or seventy-five percent of that is white woman. So, when you do this list for me, I would like to see it broken down. How many white men are on this list? And, because it's 2056 and it looks like, you know, that's all we do is we're here to hire white folk or give each other, other cousins a job. Well, to me, most teachers in this city have been great my whole life, and they just keep passing it down. Their kids go to school to become teachers. Now, what we did right a few years ago, if you remember, I think it was under Ann Sheehy when she was in the HR office, they went after a program to kind of get a homegrown type of teachers, meaning parers that might have had a bachelor's, and try to help multiple middle-sex community college to become teachers. And then, on the negative side, back when she was here, we went to New Orleans to look for staff. Now, when you're only, a small percentage are black in our system, it's not really as many as, you know, people think in the way it sounds. I think we're doing a great job so far as far as diversity with this new HR office. We're moving in the right direction. And another thing I'd like to see on this breakdown is out of those 2,000 teachers, I think it's 2,000, I'm not sure if it's 2,000 teachers, but there's quite a bit of teachers. I want to know where they live. How many live locally? How many live out of state? It's just a number that I want to know. And we had that in our reports before. I think it's pretty easy to find out in each department, how many parers live in Lowell? Because I know a lot of parers live in Lowell, a lot of cooks live in Lowell. There's a lot of clerks probably live in Lowell. But once we get into the teacher profession, it seems like too many don't live around this area. And my problem with that is, I've been watching people my whole life. They have a teacher for 40 years, all of a sudden, their kid comes up and that kid's a teacher. And then, their next, that guy's kids are going to be teachers. That's what we need to do. We need, we need to try to grow our own. And right now, the population that I think needs the most attention is definitely Latino, especially at my high school. The demographics call for it. I think this diversity thing, Mr. Superintendent, is the best thing that's ever happened to Lowell. And we need it. It's just a lot of work ahead of us on this issue. Thanks, Mayor, for the time.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Clock, and then back to Mr. Dillon.
Thank you very much. Thank you for this report. Thank you for doing this work. I know how important it is and how valuable it is to our students and to our staff. I have done and read a lot of research on the importance of this work with minority teachers and also the, and then also the impact it has on the students being able to see themselves in their teacher leaders. So, I think this is great. I'm curious about the sustainability, you know, obviously, these are both grants. This should be a priority for us to continue this work. And the partnerships are so key. I, when I, a few years ago, UMass Lowell brought someone from Michigan in to speak about their College of Education and the programs that they had where they actually incentivized students who were high school students, partnering with them, giving them an opportunity to go to school and then giving them jobs when they were coming back into district, you know, giving them opportunities to work back in the districts where they were even educated in. And it was a really successful program. And I just think, as you are saying, you know, the partnership with UMass Lowell, the opportunities perhaps with Salem State, we just, you know, this, we should be doing more and more of this. And I'm excited to see that you, that Lowell is really getting into this game and, and being very intentional in this work. So, I would like to hear, though, how long these grants are for? And then, will there be opportunity to continue them once they run through? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon.
Did you want an answer on that one or?
Oh, I thought you were just kind of throwing it out.
Sorry, the length of the grants, I'm interested in, and then sustainability of this, these programs once the grants are over. That's my question. So, thank you.
All right, do you want an answer now or in a report? Okay, Ms. Phillips?
Ms. Phillips can share about the grants, the sustainability, though. This is embedded within the school district's strategic plan. So, the general motto is to find any organization's priorities, simply look at the budget. You should fully expect that if, absent any type of external funding, this is part of our strategic priority. You would see it then come back within our operating budget. Ms. Phillips, though, about these initial grants, which were an opportunity which we worked to make sure we could bring in as many external funds to supplement our budget as possible. Ms. Phillips, this current grant?
Yeah, and, and we've been really thoughtful about what does sustainability look like? So, even as we, we were engaging in applying for the grant, we, we thought, well, you know, if we give financial incentives, right, that's not really sustainable, even though that is one way of drawing, you know, staff to our district. So, to be more sustainable, you know, we're looking at strengthening, you know, our current workforce, something that we should do, right, long-term. But let's use the current funding to learn, right? So that, once the learning is done, now it costs less to sustain. So, so that's how we're approaching this grant. And I believe that's also the expectation of the Parker Foundation, that there's like seed money to begin. And when you're successful, you figure out how to, part of that success is sustainability. And if I can also mention that two of our, well, each of our teacher, diverse teachers has, has a policy project. And we do have two teachers who are going to be presenting, you know, their recommendations around recruitment of teachers. And we can share that information with you. They'll be leading that work, but they've been working with our HR office and other, and other experts in the field.
Thank you. And I just want to say thank you, Ms. Moody, and thank you for those participating in this program. Thank you for taking advantage of this opportunity and really embracing. And it will really have a big impact on our district as a whole. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to mention, yeah, a little bit about what Mr. Hoey was talking about, about, you know, local teachers. You know, part of the long-term success of a program like this could and probably should be retaining people from our city that go into education, right? And naturally, I, you know, our population is constantly changing and with it will change, you know, who's coming back to, to educate our kids. And so, any type of communication with the colleges on programs and student teaching programs are a big deal, you know? And making sure that we have student teachers coming in to teach with our teachers, that, that's how you gain a workforce, really, right? I mean, so any type of encouraging student teaching opportunities would be something that I would suggest. And I wanted to clarify, you know, I'm certainly not trying to put words in Ms. Phillips' mouth when I was talking about the minority quotes, you know? But there's, there's plenty of reasons for it. And when, you know, minority teachers can be more motivated to work with disadvantaged minority students. I mean, you can start tangling those words in a million different ways. You can, I mean, you start putting white students in, white teachers in there, are they more motivated to work with white disadvantaged students? And, you know, the kids, it's, it's, I just think it's unnecessary and I, you know, but continue the good work and I appreciate the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darney.
Thank you, and just four quick points. I would like to agree that I think this is very important work. I think it's a direction we want to go. Number one, when you talk about some of the projects and the outcomes, I'd love, and not in any pressure on any of the people participating, but if there was some that you think would be relevant for us to hear, I think it would be very powerful to have a presentation, kind of like how we approached the, um, Spotlight on Excellence, Excellence. I really enjoyed the Portrait of a Graduate pieces where you had people from the different aspects of that program, talking to us about their experience, reporting out what they had learned. Loved that piece of it. So if that's part of it and how it's shared with us, I would be very much in favor of that. Two, when you talk about expanding, uh, the partnerships, I think that's definitely the right way to go. I was thinking, um, and maybe this is something you've thought about, but looking towards some of our urban colleges, I mean, obviously, UMass Lowell's right there, definitely, but even in Boston, Simmons, or, you know, Worcester, different, uh, communities where the, the educate, the students who are getting an, an education to become teachers might be, you know, more diverse to begin with, to be able to pull some of those kids, when they graduate, hey, come to Lowell, you know, we're better than Boston anyway, right? And then the other thing was, um, the ongoing cultural sensitivity work that we talked about. I know there was one workshop that I was aware of, I know Ms. Clark attended with me. I loved it. I thought it was very informative, and if, are we gonna be continuing that work and when, you know, to let us know about those opportunities? Because I think we do, we have an excellent staff here in Lowell, and we do want to work together, all of us, those of us who are, come from a white perspective, to really open our minds to how the world looks from a different point of view, and, and it's gonna help us all. So I'm, I'm looking forward to more of those. And then I'm gonna just end with a comment that Dr. Boyd made about, you know, look at our budget, where our priorities are, and I would ask the, um, administration to think hard on the issue of our teacher academy, because I think that funding for that program has really been minimalized, and I know we've had some tough, tough, uh, budgeting years behind us, but this should be a priority to continue to grow that teacher academy. I think it was very progressive when it started, and, and also building on what the teacher academy does for all those first-year students, to expand what their offerings are, to include that cultural sensitivity, that training. So no matter who you are coming in, whatever color, whatever your background is, you're gonna get this really inclusive, um, training and professional development that's very much who we want to be in the future, as we continue to, to grow and diversify and strengthen. But that, that's it. But, thank you. I think it was an excellent report, and I totally agree, it's important work.
Thank you, and thank you for the kind words on the Spotlight on Excellence.
Do you guys know if there's another one of those trainings coming up? Or have, have you got a date yet, or are you working on that?
We don't have a date, but we do have plans and the works for the remainder of the semester.
Uh, Mr. Howie, and then Mr. Dakota.
Thanks, Mayor. Just want to correct myself on a few things. When I said there was two thousand teachers, there's roughly approximately, I'll use that word, eleven hundred teachers. So, what I think, until, until the state, which they say eight percent of mass teachers are teachers of color, until you prove to me that teachers are going in to that field, or people of color go into that field, right now, I think the best bet we have is to work with our own staff, making sure that you have roughly three-hundred-and-eighty paraprofessionals all live in Lowell, uh, because then we have a lot of the people of color that would be getting a job and a pension, and the same thing goes with custodians. We got close to, we don't have a hundred and one anymore, we're down to about ninety-four, and more than half of them don't live in Lowell. That, I know we don't, you know, there's, you know, residency laws, maybe in Boston they have it, I'm not sure, but I think we have to focus on that until people of color show they're coming out of these schools, uh, and the pension should stay in Lowell. Thanks, Mayor, for that extra time.
Thank you, Mr. Dakota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In keeping with this discussion, I, I've been saying for almost fifteen, twenty years or so, that I believe we're gonna be facing a teacher shortage in the very short term. This is countrywide, not just here in Lowell or, or this state. I think we're going to be facing a serious crisis. I don't think we're gonna have enough teachers to go around. Uh, I think we have to have serious conversations with our universities and colleges and how they're, uh, what, what they present as a package to kids that want to go into education. Why would a kid want to go into education after four or five years in school to have the same bills as a, uh, a, an engineer would have the same bill, but yet that engineer's going to be making one and a half times the starting salary? So why would I, why would that student want to go into education? We've got to make it more appealing. Either, either offer a, uh, a, a, a student loan that is interest-free, that could be an incentive in, in and of itself, where it wouldn't really cost the university anything, uh, and, and yet it would be a, a plus for any of the kids who are in need of a, a student loan in order to get their education. I think we're gonna be faced with a situation where we're gonna have a problem trying to just find any color person to fill a job i- in the future. I know it sounds like I'm a gloom and doomer, but I really do believe that, uh, if you look at our statistics in this state for teachers, uh, you know, all of our baby boomers, I'll put myself in that category, are either about to retire or have retired, uh, and, and who's there to fill those places? And I just don't know if we're gonna be able to fill all of those positions, quite frankly, and I, I, I think we need to be proactive in terms of that as well. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Just to conclude, um, I want to bring the committee back to the example slide that Ms. Phillips shared, which was the Boston Public Schools example slide, which is, which are some maps that are pretty powerful, and having come from Boston Public Schools, I can kind of share with you a little bit of what this discussion looks like. 'Cause it looks a little bit like that here in Lowell, I believe. My theory would be, when we create our own data slides such as this, we might see a lot of this occurring. If you look at the left-hand side, which Mr. Howie referenced, you see that in the state, there's eight percent teachers of color. But on the right-hand side, look at the percentage that are coming out of Boston. Boston is essentially hemorrhaging their own talent elsewhere, because if you look at the top part, they employ just six percent of all teachers. Eight percent teachers of color, BPS accounts for. All right, so you're, you're seeing here that there's, uh, differences within locales, because our state as a whole is not very diverse. But Boston is the only community that we've identified that is more diverse than our own. We've identified that simply based on linguistic diversity. Over a hundred different languages spoken in Boston, uh, about approximately seventy different languages spoken here in Lowell. So when you look at that, uh, right side, Boston is seeing higher populations of teachers of color because of their localized teacher population, but they're also losing a lot of teachers of color that are moving back across to other communities outside of Boston. You're seeing there a big disparity between their students and their teachers' percentage. Here, I think what Mr. Howie and Mr. Dillon are referencing is really important within this case about how many of our teachers are coming up through Lowell. Where are our students here in Lowell going? Because it could certainly be, as we study this further, not that they're not entering education, but they're not entering education here in Lowell. And that brings up a lot of further questions. So, I think it's important that we not only, in the Boston example, look at the left side, but also the right side of that equation, because the demographic breakdown is not the same for a community as diverse as Boston, whereas the state as a whole, 'cause we see some of that same demographic split. We're a very, very diverse community, but yes, our percentage diversity of our staff mimics the state as opposed to mimicking our community. And what does that look like? Why is that? Where, do we have localized teachers that are actually teaching elsewhere? Because certainly, uh, I think the, the questions that Mr. Howie, Mr. Dillon brought up are not just questions, they're, those are fact-based questions, based on the experiences of fewer teachers that are actually here locally versus teachers that are coming in from other communities or living in other communities, and what does that all mean in terms of the pipeline we're building within our schools? So, uh, thank you for that point of privilege. I think that, that slide there, we don't have that type of data available to us here in Lowell, so it's an important example, because Boston's more reflective of the diversity here in Lowell than the state as a whole.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this? Need a motion to accept, uh, Superintendent Reports eight-one through eight-three as reports of progress by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Howie? All those in favor? Uh, new business, Mr. Superintendent, permission to post financial officer? I have that last on mine.
Thank you. Uh, we on permission to post, or you? Uh, that's what I also have. Nine-point-one, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, nine, I have nine-point-one, permission to post.
This is for a financial officer payroll. Ms. Turner, if you could speak to summarize, it's, it is within your packet, including a summary memo as well as, um, the recommended job description. The recommendation is approval as written. Ms. Turner, if you can provide a quick snapshot summary, uh, and then we'll stand for questions.
We currently have a retiree in the payroll office with another one two months after. My suggestion would be, rather than to just simply fill the current retiree in January, to, um, increase the responsibilities of the position to assist us with the upcoming transitions we're facing. We have projects with the city such as transfer, um, transferring our current weekly payroll to a bi-weekly payroll system. We also plan on implementing the position control that is part of the municipal accounting system. We need this person to hit the ground running. If more than half of our payroll department is retiring all at once, and they all have many years of experience, we cannot take the chance of bringing in, bringing in someone that we have to train. We need someone that will hit the ground running and be a strong leader and have strong accounting experience, I mean, payroll experience and strong municipal experience. So we're looking for a specific type of person, and we think that if we increase the responsibilities, we can attract what we're looking for.
Any questions on this? Ms. Doherty?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Turner, for that information, and I, I think I would like to add a line under the qualifications, as you heard from Ms. Turner, they're looking for someone with strong municipal and payroll experience specifically, and I remind my colleagues, we have lost money because of our inability to really do the position control that we need to do. In my, my estimation, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we need to bring payroll into the twenty-first century, and that's why we need someone who is strong in these areas, but also has the leadership ability, because as we grow out the department, you're gonna have a second person retiring, and then there's one other person, and not to diminish the work of these people, they've done excellent work, but to have somebody to lead the newcomers that follow with the skills and the knowledge to really come up with processes and systematic changes that are gonna automate things that can be automated, enable us to go to a bi-weekly pay system, all these things, position control that we really need to do. So I would make the motion that we just add under qualifications one line, and it's not my intention to, uh, limit your field, but to be very specific about the qualifications we're looking for. So I would say strong municipal and payroll experience desired. If you don't want to make it, I know Ms. Clark, uh, has concerns about making it a requirement more than a preferred. I'm comfortable with that. And I don't know if, and I would defer to, uh, Ms. Turner, if you would want to say number of years of experience or similar-sized district, something like that, would you be okay with that, too? So I would say strong municipal and payroll experience and similar-sized district. We don't even, oh, I'm, I'm open to whatever your thoughts are.
I think that we should say similar-sized district or municipal experience, because having, like, if we could attract someone from the municipal side, they're coming in into the job knowing what the other side is expecting of us. You know, um, our city pays our payroll, we just process it. So if we get, I, I wouldn't want to limit by saying just a district, because that would exclude those that are coming from the city. But I, I think you're absolutely right, these, um, this person could bring us forward into the future, and it could, they could also serve as a liaison between HR and City Hall. HR, we would want a partnership when we do the step increases, so that we don't have the problems that we faced to this past year, where HR and, um, the finance office did a, an audit of all the people getting step increases, and some were given step increases before their time, and some were not given them. So in order to avoid that type of stuff, if we have a payroll, strong payroll person that understands, you know, step increases and all of that, we would have a, a great opportunity to improve.
So if I could have just given that, adjust my motion to be, I, I'm, um, accepting the job description, adding one, uh, qualification, which would be strong municipal and payroll experience and similar-sized district or municipal, municipality? Preferred.
Okay. Sure. Seconded by Mr. Dakota. Did you get all that? Yeah.
Can we speak?
Sure. Mr. Dakota with the long name.
I'm having a hard time supporting this, uh, only because the person that's retiring out of payroll right now, Ms. Smith, I keep forgetting her first name. If, uh, all our staff members worked like she has in the past thirty-something years, I would be very fortunate to be able to say that. I think there's people in our system already that are at a grade five as far as secretaries go, and they're looking for a career ladder. There's only approximately fifty or sixty, don't hold me on the numbers, but secretaries, there aren't that many of them. They're at the lower end of the scales, especially the ones that are sitting in a school, like, let's say, that has two-hundred-and-thirty kids. They're at a level three. They're as important as every other secretary, but money-wise, they're at a very low level. So this play, this position, we're gonna replace with someone that has to have more qualifications. We're gonna take away a six-A, they're called, a secretary, which is a promotion for somebody that might be sitting up in special ed or all around our system that I think can do the job. That's how I feel. It's my opinion. I don't want to vote for it. I'm not gonna vote for it. I want to keep, uh, keep it the way it is, and, um, thank you for the time, Mayor.
Ms. Turner?
I'm not trying to take away the opportunity for anyone. As a matter of fact, if there are grade-five clerks that have payroll experience, they would be encouraged to apply. We cannot just take someone that has clerical experience and raise them to a payroll position when we only have three payroll people paying over two-thousand employees in our, our district. We had, um, many times during the last year where we had more than one of the payroll people out at the same time. I agree with you that all of the payroll people are exceptional, they're exceptional. They have many years' experience, thirty years' experience, but just thinking from a logical point of view, if we continue to keep this as a six-A position, then we would not be able to ask the person to do anything more than the other two payroll positions that are also becoming available, because of course, unions dictate whether they have the same workload and all of that. So we would not be able to have the payroll person participate in all of these upcoming payroll improvements if we leave it at a six-A.
Thank you for the clarification. Mr. Howie, yeah?
Yeah, I just want to have a little comeback on that. The reason why I, I, I think we should keep it like it is, I'd like to see those three people that are working in payroll right now, what experience they had in their career. Probably don't even have a bachelor's degree, who knows? Uh, I know one thing, those three people we just gave a raise not too long ago, we brought them from, I believe it was a five to a six-A, and now they're all retiring on us. But I still feel our system has the people we need right here, and we don't need any more positions from the outside. And, um, I, I'm more concerned about some of the secretaries, I think Robin Desmond deserves to have one, that's a seven. I think Lioness over there deserves one, that would be a seven. That's a career ladder, promotions. We're all worrying about pensions. I know I have one. Thank you very much.
Okay.
But, uh, I think we should be looking at our staff, especially the lower end, the cooks, the secretaries, and paraprofessionals. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Clark?
Thank you. Uh, yes, I think that the addition, um, the additional line that Ms. Doherty, um, mentioned before is an important one, and I appreciate that you kept it as preferred, because, um, as a payroll professional myself, this is work that I've done, and I know how important it is, um, to, uh, have a bit of differentiation when you have a, a team, and it's, it's important because you do, there are, is some work that is additionally needed to, especially when you're talking about transitioning to a new pay cycle, um, when you're looking at process improvement, um, creating efficiencies. It's really important work, it's good, it's important to have a team, but there is, um, it's some additional work that's needed. And just one of the questions I have, is this an exempt position from a Fair Labor Standards Act perspective? Is this, I would assume so. Sorry, is this, um, is this exempt, considered an exempt versus non-exempt position from an FLSA perspective? I would assume, kind of based, yeah, based on the requirements, which is, I think, why it does stand out and above, um, you know, a little different from a clerical, not that the clerical worker- the clerical work and the positions are very important. And I think as Ms. Doherty or someone, while we were discussing, pointed out that because of some other retirements coming up, there will perhaps still be, there are going to be some opportunities for advancement, even within the clerical union, perhaps. So, and as you mentioned, Ms. Turner, that there, this is not precluding anyone who's working in a position in our district from, from applying if they are, in fact, meet the qualifications. So, I'm very happy to support this position. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I just have one question, too, before we vote on the motion. There's no vacation requirement on this one? The other, the other topic tonight, there's a vacation suggestion. So, what's the vacation requirement for this?
Actually, I don't think we even considered that when we did the job description, you mean?
Yeah.
We, I would have to ask the chief operating officer what they typically offer for people in that position.
All right. No, does anybody start at two weeks anymore? No?
Five days.
Huh?
Five days.
Five, I know. All right. I mean, I would recommend we go to two weeks, but I don't know if I can even recommend that, but it just seems like we're very generous with our vacation time on the school side. Mr. Superintendent, do you have a comment?
I think we can analyze that. I certainly wouldn't want to take one position out of whatever the standard is within the other jobs that we offer, but Dr. Hall, can you take that note? We can certainly analyze it and what the impact would be of that. I think that might be the proper course of action, Mr. Mayor, rather than taking a one-off with one job.
Yep. Okay. So, we got a motion on the floor by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Dakota, for the adjust, yeah, sure, read the, if you could.
So, you want a line added that reads, "Strong munis and payroll experience with municipal experience preferred."
Or municipal.
"In similar-sized districts or municipalities preferred."
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Roll call?
Mr. Houghey?
No.
Mia Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Five yeas, one nay, one absent, approved.
Okay. Thank you. So, now, I have 9-2, permission to post family liaison for McKinley-Vito program. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a grant-funded position that is, and it's an allowable expenditure entirely within the grant. It's a different use of the grant. As prior, previously, the committee has had multiple part-time positions. This is taking two of those part-time positions, one of those two, which is currently vacant, combining them into create a full-time position. Ms. Phillips, if you can share a quick summary of this job, and then staff will stand for questions.
So, this position works directly and specifically with the, with homeless students and families of homeless students. It is, our homeless population has continued to increase, and our screening processes have continued to improve. And given that, we recommend a full-time position to be able to provide that continuity, greater leadership, and support within the, within the McKinley-Vito program.
Ms., are you all set? Ms. Phillips?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. Just a quick question. I want to make sure I understand. So, we're going, we're not losing a part-time position, right? You're going to have one full-time position and one part-time position? Because we have three part-time right now. So, that's true.
Yes.
Yeah, that would be my only concern, because I do like the idea of having that one part-time person who can maybe take different hours and all that. And what, is that not correct? Because when I read it, I wasn't sure about that. So, we're taking three part-time positions and combining two of them to be one full-time person and one part-time person?
Yes, that's correct.
I totally support that move. I think it makes sense. Thank you. I would make a motion to approve.
Okay. Any questions for us, though? Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I guess, is that good for the efficiency of, you know, of that job? I mean, is that, having a full-time?
Sure, Ms. Phillips.
Yeah, I guess I just, yeah, do you mind just speaking to it? Is it, it makes, it makes things more efficient and excellent?
Yes. So, we, in order to have full coverage during the day, we needed two individuals, minimum, and then potentially could have a third person after hours.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it's just better to have.
It's just simple hours, covering the whole, the whole day, right? Yeah. Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Houghey?
All I need to know is, it's being paid by a grant, correct? No.
McKinley-Vito grant, correct, Ms. Phillips? You've already checked that down. allowable expenditure?
Yes. And, and so, just to be clear, the three part-time positions, we're working largely during the school day, but there's greater flexibility in having one person and flexibility with other hours for another person.
Right.
And does the grant pay for the insurance and vacation time or whatever, since it goes to a full-time position?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. And how long is the grant for?
It's, it's ongoing federal grant. It's based on the number of students that we serve.
Okay. So, there's no cost to the district, really?
This is one of your sustainable funding streams, because it's a federal, federal grant, but not the local, local funding.
Right.
Okay. All right. Roll call?
I need a second.
Oh. Who, you did it first?
Doherty made a motion, yeah.
And then, Ms. Clark, second.
Okay. Mr. Houghey?
Yes.
Mia Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Six yeas, one absent, approved.
Okay. 9-3, budget transfer?
Thank you. The budget transfers are recommended, are listed within your packet. Ms. Turner's available if there are any questions. The recommendations, approval as written.
Any questions on the transfer? Just, any questions? No?
Just going to say move to approve?
Okay. Mr. Houghey, seconded by Ms. Clark. So, again, just a quick comment. I just, I need more of a cover letter on these, because again, I just, I don't, people are going to ask me, what did I do? And I have no idea. Okay.
We got you covered, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Turner will be providing a more extensive cover letter in subsequent transfers.
Okay.